All right, everyone. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Lowell's Zoning Order of Appeals for November 28th. Just a reminder, you could join tonight via your computer tablet or smartphone device, and you can also call in to the public hearing as well. Just a friendly reminder that if you have a cell phone or electronic device to put it on vibrate or turn it off so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. Also a reminder to, we're gonna ask every meeting, you know, conducted in an orderly and respectful manner. Please, let's not talk over one another. If you're being addressed by the chair, then you can talk. So that's just a reminder for, in terms of Robert's Rule of Procedure and just general decorum and respect for everyone here tonight to keep the meeting and the hearing, make it as efficient as possible for everyone involved. That being said, while the continued business, ZBA-2022-46, a variance, the documents House of Hope, property located at 35 Varnum Ave. The House of Hope Incorporated has applied to the Lowell Zoning Order of Appeals seeking a variance approval to construct eight-unit apartment building at 35 Varnum Ave. The property is located in the traditional single-family zoning district. The project requires zoning board approval of variance for minimum usable open space per dwelling unit, maximum stories, maximum height requirement, and maximum front yard setback under Section 5.1. Minimum all-site parking space under Section 6.1. The construction of more than one primary residential dwelling structure on a lot under Section 5.2.2. Relief from landscape open space requirement under Section 5.3.1 and other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, ma'am. You want to state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Deb Chasse. I'm the Executive Director at House of Hope. I live at 10 Dayton Street in Lowell. I am here again seeking support in the form of variances that House of Hope requires to build an eight-unit apartment building on land we own at 35 Varnum Avenue. Although the process has been challenging for us all, I think I can say with confidence that it has resulted in an improved project that will enable us to respond to the most, to most, if not all, of the concerns that we have heard raised by both our neighbors and by you, members of the Board. There were many concerns about access to the small neighborhood known as Clinton Avenue and the impact of increased traffic, increased parking, impact on snow removal, and increased foot traffic. As we reported at our last meeting and reiterate tonight, we will continue to keep Clinton Avenue unreachable by any resident or staff located at 35 Varnum Avenue. This lack of access will ensure that there is very little impact on our Clinton Avenue neighbors. There was also concern about the number of variances that we were requesting. The initial application listed many, and subsequent information was reported in confusing ways. Our timeline was tight, and in hindsight, was probably too tight, given the concerns of this project. We have clarified our submissions, reduced the number of requested variances, and accepted the reality that we need to slow things down. Both our attorney and lead architect will speak to our revised requested relief. Another concern was placing a separate building on the lot. As I and my team had to discuss this concern, we had a eureka moment of recognition that by adding on to our existing building strengthens House of Hope's program. Adding on to the building enables a truly shared education and service delivery space between shelter program participants and supportive housing tenants. This shared classroom service space will allow for better programming like computer lab tutoring, volunteers to mentor and teach both adults and children, and other sorely needed supports. Additionally, tenants will be constantly reminded of their struggle while homeless, hopefully impacting the choices they make to grow in independence. And shelter residents will see that permanent housing stability is indeed possible, and support from House of Hope and the community does not end. We also heard that there was concern about the dumpster location, and we addressed that by moving the dumpster away from Clinton Ave and closer to the proposed addition. Neighbors also mentioned their current difficulties with sewer and drainage on their street. Our engineer presented at the last zoning meeting that we will use curbing, drains, and catch basins, and that the sewer line will be routed to Varnum Avenue. Our legal obligation is to ensure that there is no total increase in storm water runoff. As the executive responsible for our current building at 35 Varnum Avenue, I report to this Board and members of the public that I have never had a complaint about water runoff or anything else from our Clinton Ave neighbors, with the exception of some minor tree work, which House of Hope took care of at the request of our rebutter. There was concern about the size of the building. We recognize that eight units is larger than most of the neighborhood, but by adding on to the existing building rather than creating a separate building, we're able to reduce the footprint, set it closer to the existing shelter, and ensure that it will not be seen when looking directly down Clinton Avenue from Mammoth Road. Another benefit is that the addition preserves more of the backyard. Although we were able to reduce the size of the addition, we concluded that reducing the number of units was not feasible because it would have made our application less competitive by increasing the cost per unit to construct. Building fewer units would not have impacted our request for zoning relief. We heard concerns about this project setting a precedent for other developers. We specifically did not attempt to subdivide the property in order to avoid the need to set a precedent. Also, this site is unique in that it is already permitted as non-conforming, has access to two roadways, directly abuts the neighborhood business district, and provides a public good. House of Hope does not want to interfere with the quality of life and community enjoyed by our Clinton neighbors. Since 2009, House of Hope has been an abut to the street, and some Clinton Avenue residents never even knew we were there. Our goal is simply to house homeless families and to do everything possible to help both the adults and the children increase their independence. The ultimate dream, and one which we have seen happen, is that formerly homeless families in our buildings become homeowners. There is no financial gain for either me or my staff, just the satisfaction of growing our mission and helping homeless families. Again, this process has been hard for everyone, and I recognize that I made mistakes. The errors were not born of insensitivity, malice, or financial gain, but they were born from a deep desire to take advantage of current funding to end homelessness for eight families in Lowell. The timeline was tight, and I had some mistaken assumptions about developing on property already owned by my agency. I am not a professional developer, and House of Hope is not run by a large corporation. We are simply a good Lowell-based nonprofit who receives a lot of community support trying to do more for homeless families. So I thank you again for this new opportunity to get it right, or at least as right as we can. Jacob Taylor will now review for the Board and the public the significantly reduced relief that we are seeking as a result of incorporating many of the suggestions gleaned from neighbors and the ZBA.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Can I ask that we put the PowerPoint up? Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you for again taking the time to hear from us. I'm first going to recap the primary concerns raised regarding our project at prior meetings, then walk through the significant changes that have been incorporated into the project to address these, and I'll end by speaking to why we meet the criteria for the requested variances. As you may recall, at prior meetings, our neighbors voiced concerns regarding traffic, parking, and congestion on Clinton Avenue. They voiced concerns around foot traffic and a preference for House of Hope's residents not to use Clinton Avenue to access the bus stop and other amenities on Mammoth Road. The neighbors did not like the proposed location of our dumpster. Neighbors expressed concerns about density and proximity of our proposed project to the end of Clinton Avenue and the nearby homes. And they also expressed concerns around noise and headlights from cars entering our property, as well as sewer and drainage impacts on Clinton Avenue. As Deb indicated, House of Hope has heard these concerns and incorporated significant design changes to address them. After prior meetings, House of Hope agreed to maintain fencing to prevent House of Hope residents from using Clinton Avenue. To be clear, Clinton Avenue will not be accessible by vehicle or by foot from our site, and our project will have no effect on Clinton Avenue in terms of parking, congestion, or either pedestrian or vehicular traffic. The project will also not impact Clinton Avenue's sewer or drainage systems, as the proposed system is a completely separate and downgrade of Clinton Avenue. After prior meetings, House Hope also agreed to move the proposed dumpster to the other side of the property and to incorporate privacy fencing so as to address concerns regarding privacy and headlights. Since the last meeting, the House Hope team did some additional thinking about potential improvements to the layout and how we can best address remaining concerns of our neighbors, and we're now proposing some more significant changes to the layout. We think that this results in a proposed project that is significantly better for As Deb indicated, we're now proposing to build an addition rather than a freestanding structure. This will allow the new structure to be moved further towards Varnum Avenue and further away from the Clinton Avenue neighbors. The new addition is also smaller in volume than the prior proposal, and we've done away with some of the dormers. This new configuration allows us to locate our outdoor totlot area further from the homes on Clinton Avenue, thus helping to address concerns around noise. We're also now adding even more trees along the northern and westernly property lines to provide screening and address privacy concerns. Finally, as Deb indicated, the revised plan also benefits House of Hope's mission by providing an opportunity to better integrate the proposed educational and programming space to serve both residents of the existing shelter facility and the new addition and the like. Can we slip to the next slide? One more, please. The new layout also has the effect of reducing the number of variances required from the ZBA, and I just want to note that the list that was read in the beginning has been narrowed very significantly. As you can see here, we're no longer requesting relief as to front yard setback or construction of more than one dwelling structure on the lot. We are now only requesting relief for lot area per dwelling unit and a minimum open space per dwelling unit under Section 5.1, and off-street parking requirements under Section 6.1. As to why we meet the criteria for the variances, as Deb indicated, this is a unique lot in terms of size and depth. This is a deep 33,970-square-foot lot in a district with a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet, and where many of the surrounding lots are even smaller than this. The lot can accommodate the proposed addition without creating density that would be out of character with the neighborhood. But without this requested relief, this lot will remain underutilized. The project will advance the public good by providing desperately needed affordable housing units with onsite educational programming for families in need. This is consistent with the city's master plan, which identifies the following objectives: to build and maintain a diversity of housing options throughout the city so as to support economic vitality and meet the evolving needs of residents; to maintain a distribution of affordable housing throughout the neighborhoods; to support and promote programs that rapidly rehouse individuals or families who are currently homeless; and maintain and strengthen the city's partnerships with nonprofit providers serving homeless and at-risk homeless clients. The proposed project will advance all of these objectives, and House of Hope has taken appropriate measures to address community concerns by relocating the proposed dumpster, eliminating the proposed gate connecting to Clinton Avenue, and moving the massing of the building further away from Clinton Avenue. The requested relief can be granted without derogating from the intent of the zoning ordinance, because the layout and massing have been designed to minimize adverse effects on neighbors, and this project will advance core priorities identified by the city. I'll now ask Cliff Bomer from Davis Square Architects to provide more detail on our design changes. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you, Jacob. So what I'm going to do is sort of the graphic version of what you've heard. I'll keep it succinct, because you've heard, I think, most of why we're here. If you could slip to the next slide, please. So what I'll emphasize on this slide is, I won't repeat all of what has been said before us, but in this slide, you can see the connector piece now between the two, the classroom connector that joins the two buildings. The other things that are notable are increased space on the west side of the site between that neighbor and us. But I'll go into a little more detail about that in the next couple of slides. I think the way I really wanted to start was by really thanking the Board for your patience and all the personal time that you've put into this. We think it's been a real engagement with the project that is truly appreciated, and I think the result of that has helped a lot. I think with, both from reworking the project to a degree where we think we've made even further advances in minimizing impact on the neighbors, and certainly as importantly as, maybe more importantly, has been outlined by both Deb and Jacob, is that this change in the project also really reinforces the reason that we think this is an important addition to the community by joining the two buildings, sharing the program, has really helped us. I don't think we would necessarily have gotten here without all the time that everybody's put in, as well as the neighbor input as well, of course. So I'm going to jump right to the next slide, which just shows differences. I hope you can see that well enough, but just quickly running through, the number one is showing you where we removed the gate, so there's absolutely no contact now with Clinton Avenue. Number two shows you the relocation of the dumpster. It used to be on that west, northwest corner of the site. We've now moved it where it has, I think, no impact on neighbors. Three is connecting the building with the shelter, with the classroom and service space, moving things away. As Jacob pointed out, it did allow us to move the building, the new addition, further away from Clinton Avenue. Number four is moving the addition, I just want to put a little detail on that. The building moved 18 feet, basically. The new piece moved 18 feet towards the east, and it's also rotated. We rotated it to also get it further away from Clinton Avenue, so that if you look at the northwest corner of the new piece on the back, that was previously about 30 feet from our closest neighbor. The closest point on that corner to our nearest neighbor on Clinton was 30 feet. Now it's 43 feet. By moving it to the east and rotating it counterclockwise a bit, we were able to increase that distance. As importantly, our neighbor on Janess Street to the west, that in the previous version that you've seen, it was about 95 feet from the closest point of our new building. At that point, it was a separate building, but 95 feet, and now it's 120 feet. So we've really focused on making it a compact development. Number five, the totlot, it's now more embedded in the buildings or closer together. It's smaller than it was, and any active play equipment in there has been moved further to the east as well to get as far as we can from Clinton Avenue so that we don't have any concerns about noise impact. If you, please slip to the next slide. I did also want to point out differences in the massing. The bulk of the building has gone down. We've removed square footage in the addition compared to a freestanding building. We lowered the roof on the eastern, I'm sorry, westernmost part of the building. We dropped the ridge line. We completely eliminated that entry piece, that one-story entry piece that moved the building further away. We also got rid of any of the dormers, the roof dormers, that were looking out across the neighbor. So we really thought hard about that and think that that makes a substantial difference in the massing of the building. The next slide is somewhat familiar slide, but it's kind of making a point that I think is kind of obvious from looking at that axonometric, is the view on the left is what we showed you last time when the building was in the previous location, and now you can't see it at all, you know, from that perspective on Clinton. The building has now moved closer to Varnum and totally out of the view. And of course, we are proposing a tall opaque fence to deal with any headlight intrusion issues. Some of that you heard last time already, but I think that's, those are the changes we've made, is try to make it more compact, be even more sensitive to, you know, the perception of any negative impact on our neighbors, and of course, further reinforcing the program for Hope House and the potential future residents there. At this point, I'll introduce Jim DeVellis, who's a civil engineer. He can answer any of the more technical points, but I will point out that we did just very recently get some geotechnical report that I think has helped a lot of our design issues.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board. As Cliff said, my name is Jim DeVellis. I'm a professional civil engineer with DeVellis, Zareen, and I'll try to be succinct, not to repeat the message from the first three speakers. So if we could go to the next slide. So we're responsible for, if you strip back all the color and the 3D renderings, putting it on layout materials, grading, drainage utility, from an engineering perspective. So this is what's behind all the colored rendering, and I'll just briefly, you can see on the top of the plan, you can see where Clinton Ave comes in, and on this plan, we label it, you know, six-foot fence, no gate. So there's going to be actually no access from pedestrian vehicles or utilities, the sewer, gas, drainage, electric, everything's going to be coming from Varnum and not from Clinton. The other thing that shows on this C1 layout plan that was submitted, the dumpster is shown, it's enclosed furthest away from Clinton, and if you can see on this plan, if you're anywhere on Clinton looking down, as Cliff had said, we moved the building about 18, 20 feet away, so those views, anywhere along further down Clinton, you're not going to be able to see the building. And then furthermore, any of the vehicles that are parked there, there's a six-foot fence. And on the original plan, I think we had about 20 evergreens along the north and west side. Listening to the concerns and some of the discussions, we've increased that from 20 to about 45, so you just won't be able to see through that. So the next slide, the other thing that we were asked to look at was if a fire truck had to get up into the site. So what's shown is a turning template study that we took the largest fire truck that Lowell has, a 45-foot rig, and brought it up through the site and was able to bring it in, turn around, and come back out very easily. So between, and we don't have to go back, but we showed snow storage throughout the site, so that's easily accommodated. And most recently, we did a geotechnical study where we did borings throughout the site, and what it shows is there's plenty of separation from surface to groundwater, so we're not going to be impacting that. So between the grading, the curbing, the drainage infiltration, no impact offsite, especially to Clinton, but anywhere around the site, we're going to assure that there's no impact from any of the storms, up to 100-year storm event. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If that's all from the petitioner, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Tracy Janess, and thank you for having me tonight to voice my concerns. I'm impressed with what they did, and that they listened to our concerns. But my concern is, if this request came from a commercial developer, would we have even gotten this far? The fact that, I have my doubts that you had even been thinking about having this happen on the property that they are asking for. As a neighbor, and I have stated before, we have utter respect for the House of Hope and support for them. We commend them for all that they do in the community and all the good things that they do to help families. I see it firsthand in the schools that I worked in, but we have no support for this project at all. It's going to impact the neighborhood, no matter what the size is. We have been here multiple times already to discuss this project, and I respectfully asked the Board to be respectful of the City of Lowell zoning codes that you adhere by when you're making these decisions. And maybe, I was hoping that tonight there would be a vote at this time, respectfully on the information that's given and from other neighbors that might speak tonight. And thank you for your time. I just don't want to keep coming back here. I mean, one of the concerns that comes to me that I haven't voiced yet is, great, House of Hope owns this now. They make this construction. Something happens, human service money dries up. Who's going to own that building later on down the road? What kind of tenants are going to be coming in? Right now, you're going to have supervised tenants, but what's going to happen if this building gets turned over into a public, into a private sector? What's that going to bring to the neighborhood? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, madam. Anyone else who wants to speak in opposition?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Orvin Ramos. I live at 14 Clinton Avenue, and I also oppose it as well. Me and Tracy, we took the time to go around the neighborhood to speak to our neighbors as well, to see what they thought about the project. I can tell you, we've got over 100 signatures of the closest neighbors. We could have gotten more, but everybody had something to say about that, the fact that nobody wants it there. I encountered only two people, and they didn't oppose, they just wanted to learn more because they thought I was exaggerating. And I'm like, no, you can look at the details online, you can look at the impact that's going to have, and also, excuse me, I'm a little nervous. We went through that. I've mailed it out to the city council as well, all the signatures and everything, and what else did we do? While we were also walking by, we also found, I know I spoke about there being other sort of programs around the area. I also found one just two doors down, some group home that they have in the White House. I don't know the exact address. But then I also had some concerns, just as my neighbor also had, about spot zoning. How come, I mean, this is, I can tell you, at 60 Mammoth where Fields was, they came in to ask for a two-unit, and that was shut down immediately. I don't understand how two units and now eight, that's a big change. Why one and why not the other? The rules and laws should apply to everybody equally. And that's pretty much it. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. I also happen to go to my neighbors just to see how close and where the border is. I still don't see how that, where the trees going? Are they going on her yard, or are they going on the side of the House of Hope? Like, where exactly is the borderline? Also, I wanted to ask when the revisions were made available online, because when I looked at them, I could not find them. And I wanted to look at it before so I could come here prepared, and for some reason, I also wanted to show, submit some materials myself, because sort of like the picture they showed on Clinton Ave where there was no cars, I can actually, I have it in my pocket right now, I can show you a picture just today. can actually, I have it in my pocket right now, I can show you a picture just today where it's midday, most people are working, and you can't even drive through there because it's so packed. And I understand that they don't want, at the moment, they don't want access to Clinton Ave. But they did mention it that it was for their time on our first meeting. That I'm sure would change. I'm sure it would change, not just for Clinton Ave, but maybe Janes or the other street that cuts across. I forgot what it's called. It's Cooburn Court or something like that? I mean, what's to stop them from doing that as well? Like I said, we went through all the neighbors, we could have gotten more, but like I said, sometimes in conversations for half an hour. And again, we like the work that they do, we appreciate them, but it's just a huge project there. And like I said, I couldn't find not one. I only found two, and like I said, because they just thought I was over-exaggerating. And I'm like, no, this is exactly the type of work they do. And I told them, I'm like, we're happy with what they do right now, but again, this is a huge project. And they were actually concerned, some of my neighbors on the side of Varnum Ave as well, because they weren't notified. And I could understand the abutters, but that's a neighborhood impact. Why just the abutters? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Hello, Patricia Hamlin, I live at 8 Clinton Ave. First of all, we have to stop meeting like this. It's getting to be too much. Thank you. Patricia Hamlin, 8 Clinton Ave, we have to stop meeting like this. I'm with them. It's too big. It's eight units for a reason. It's labeled a project for charity, but they need a profit. They're going to profit with a space that isn't not as big as it shows. Our street is not as big as they show. What they tell us today, they could change tomorrow. They could change next year. They could change in five years. You know, we have a packed little community on that little tiny area, surrounded by all kinds of things. McDonald's is 24 hours, they never were before, right? We have the noise from 7-Eleven, that can get rowdy, right? Who knows what's going to happen here? If it's young girls with children, they all have boyfriends, right? I don't want anybody homeless, but what they have there is enough. We don't want them building more. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Jocelyn Lassard. I'm at 17 Clinton Ave. I'm speaking on behalf of my father, Roger, who owns the house. I was unaware of the changes to the project, so I'm sort of speaking a little extemporaneously about things that we've talked about before. And I respect and value the changes that have been presented this evening. However, we're still talking about three aspects to the zoning codes that are being requested for variance. And as we've talked about before, previous hearings, you know, noise, traffic, you know, from additional people, that's just inevitable. I pulled public records for the House of Hope, and in fiscal year 2021, they had $4.9 million in income and $4.2 million in expenses for a net profit of $657,000 in fiscal year 2021. They also have a $9.8 million balance sheet, of which $6.155 million of that is in equity. So this project is expedient to the petitioner, not to the neighborhood. And it's at the potential expense of the neighborhood down the road. We can't predict the future. And so now is the time to make the decision. Once a decision is made, it's irrevocable, and it will affect this neighborhood no matter what. And we appreciate what they've done to take steps to try to mitigate that, but it's still a large project, larger than our entire neighborhood, and that's going to have an impact to us. I ask you to vote no on this petition and recommend that they seek another location within the city that will also serve us perhaps even more people than this particular project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Curtis Lemay. I live at 40 Roberts Street in the Pataqueville section. I'm several blocks from here, but I've lived in the neighborhood my whole life, and I know a lot of these people. The concern I had the last time, I think I stressed the fact that there was eight variances involved, which I felt was way too many for the project in question. So I see that they've eliminated a couple of those, and now the fence will more or less be stable to the point that it won't be utilized. So I guess, I throw this out to either side. I'm not sure when this takes place, but I'm almost positive that someone like the fire department has to sign off on this project. Where and when that happens, I don't know, but I would, if there's only one means of egress out there, I have a concern now. It was a concern with the dead-end street before, but it's just as much as a concern because I don't have facts and figures. The neighborhood wasn't told any of this, some of these things till I know of, till tonight before they came before you. But if you're going to have people in there and the type of project that it is, any one alarm, you're going to have three pieces of apparatus there. You're going to have a pumper truck, a ladder, and rescue. Now, I don't know about a ladder truck going in there, whereabouts they can set up. I don't, I can't visualize it looking at that plan from here because I couldn't see it that well. But I, you know, I would want it on my conscience if something happened. I've seen it happen over the decades here in the city. And I just think some of those things, I'm against, I'm just against it. I'm not against the House of Hope. I just don't know what is going to transpire down the road if the board and there's still some hemming and hawing as far as you're going to come back again. The neighborhood wants to be involved. That's the bottom line. Don't take something from them or make it more difficult for the decades that they've been there, let alone generations. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing that and a portion of property is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Yeah, come to the left, sir. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Harry. Not Dirty Harry, but Harry. I've lived in this city for most of my life. I don't live here now. But what I observe here, there's two things I want to, one thing I want to say. This is a democracy, not an autocracy, okay? You know what that means? Okay, that's all I want to say. And if you'd have any problems with me, you can see me. I'm a Navy SEAL, Vietnam, Cambodia, 68 to 70. Anybody want to? It's here. Come up and see it. But God bless everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Connie Coxwell. I'm at 128 Warren Street in Brighton, excuse me, in Lowell, and I am on the board of House of Hope. I absolutely appreciate everyone's concerns, and I really, I'm in the development business, and I have been really impressed by how much they have, the House of Hope has adjusted their plans to address the concerns. And I know that folks are saying who's, what's going to come next? Well, you'll have, we'll have building permits that will be signed off by water and sewer, that'll be signed off by fire department and all that jazz. So that's, there's a whole other set of lines, eyes that'll be looking at this plan as well. And I think similarly, you know, what comes of that site if they go out of business or whatever, what happens with any of these sites? I think that these guys have more access to public funds and other sources to continue to do their good work, which they've done for the last 35 years. So again, just strongly support the project, totally hear the neighbors, but I do think that the House of Hope has addressed their concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, property is closed. For his petition, we're going to open up comments, questions to the board. Chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate the House of Hope making these adjustments for the neighbors. I guess there is still a lot of opposition, and it's, I'm not sure if the project will pass the neighbors at all, because it seems like that everything that the House of Hope tried to do is shut down. But just looking from the site itself and the plan, it seems like a plausible plan. But I do believe that there is some concerns from a boarding, from a neighborhood perspective that quality of life is part of what people look for when a project comes before the board. And it just seems like it's disrupting, you know, that, you know, you know, that portion of it. But from a zoning and planning perspective, I mean, it looks like, you know, there was adjustments made that were positive and hopefully minimal impact. But as the neighbors said, they are now finding out about this today. And I think the first time we, this came before the board, one of the things we said that we advocate is talk to the neighborhoods, talk to the groups, and get them to buy in. So, I mean, I do have some questions. I know they, one of the issues, because there's been a lot of modifications, and I know there was a talking about the stormwater, stormwater report. I don't think I've seen that. I would like to see that. I know there was some mention about there should be no impact on Clinton Streets and the other streets, but as a board, I would like to see all of the information. There was a mention on the landscaping open space. The architectural drawings indicated that there was 50% of the area from the front line and the facade that there must be landscaped from a zoning district, and the exact measurement is not provided. That's another example I'd like to see. The architectural plans indicate that it's less than 50% of landscape open space. Can it, I'm sorry, the architect? I forgot. Forgot his name. Oh, Cliff, sorry.
You were asking about the percentage of landscape. It's 71.8%. And that was provided when we submitted on, what date was it? On the 21st, we submitted this package.
Okay. I might be going blind, so I apologize for that. Now, my other, my fellow members will address other items, I'm sure, but, and I do appreciate the fact that you minimized the variances that's needed. I mean, we can see maximum stories, height requirements and so forth. So as I said, it looks like a nice neat package. I would be concerned of how the neighbors would feel, you know, with this being built when there is so much opposition. That's one thing. But how do you mitigate that is meeting with the groups. So again, I still promote that since a lot of them felt that they didn't have a chance to review or to rebuttal. But I would defer to my other board members if they have a, I'm sorry.
Could I respond to that about meeting? Okay. You know, we did have a good faith meeting. It was a couple of hours. It was a difficult meeting. I mean, we've heard the thread through all of the ZBA meetings. The neighbors don't want the building. Every issue that the neighbors have put before us, we have done our very best to address. Last, the last meeting that we attended, there was really some personal attack on my character and on the character of my team. It was suggested that we photoshopped pictures, even though they're Google pictures that you can get, anybody can get online. There was a suggestion that there was somehow, I was chasing the money or something like that. There was also a comment made that I would build on a cemetery if I could. Now, all of this is record because we watched the meeting over a number of times. So there really was not a cooperative spirit either way. And quite honestly, I was hurt. You know, I've been doing this work for 40 years. I have a track record in the city with my team, and, you know, and we're, and I run a very large shelter organization. No, I did not go back to the neighbors and say, come and beat me up again. I did not do that. What I did do was got the team together to be extraordinarily creative and flexible and responsive to the concerns that we heard. So, you know, I wish that we could have a meaningful dialogue, but I think it's been proven at this meeting. This is a public meeting. These comments were made publicly, and I have a colleague that heard them when she was in London. I mean, these meetings are, you know, on the internet as well. So no, I did not have the capacity to pull together another community meeting to get beat up. But we heard and we listened and we incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll defer to you other members.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. Chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question with respect to the plans. The original proposal, which was a separate building, did the plans label classroom area
I'm not sure. There certainly was a classroom area and programming space incorporated initially. I'm not sure.
Was it labeled on the plans?
Probably on the floor plans because it was inside the building. We had a shared community room.
I see it nowhere. I see it in the new plans.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if there's a specific reason why it's included in the new plans.
Well, it's only because we redesigned the building, and that was the perfect space to put it. But we did have a shared community room classroom space. We have case managers on site. We're taking down that accessory building, which is what we currently use for programming.
So it's your position that that classroom space was always a part of this project?
There was classroom space and service space always a part of this project, yes.
Okay. My opposition to this project was always with respect to the density. And quite frankly, I see nothing in the changes that were made that makes this any less dense So with that in mind, I was sorry to hear that your meeting, or one of the meetings with the neighborhood was so contentious, but as you said, you're a professional, well, you should be used to that. Those types of meetings happen every Tuesday night during the city council. That's part of democracy, as our friend, the naval SEAL said. Fighting your way through a contentious meeting is often how you come to compromise and consensus. You didn't use that option here. And many of the residents here tonight And many of the residents are here tonight and they're learning for the first time some of the revisions. That's not fair. I don't mean to suggest that anyone who may have said something insensitive to you was justified. I don't believe it so. But we're all human, say things that we regret, regret occasionally, and we get over it if it's, if the project is worthwhile. This project is worthwhile, there's no doubt. I never had any quarrel with the House of Hope. In fact, in my full-time capacity at the Lowell Housing Authority, we work closely with the House of Hope. So, I know firsthand how valuable they are. No objection to that. My objection is to this particular structure. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but cutting and pasting the building from one area and connect it to the other, it may solve the zoning technically, but it still violates the spirit of the zoning ordinance. The project's too dense. I hope you can find another location, if need be, and continue your good work. I just don't think it belongs here. So, as I sit here this evening thus far, I remain opposed to the project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair organizes, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see a lot of very constructive modifications that have been made here, for sure. The idea of combining the two buildings and reducing the density on the lot is tremendous, I think, a tremendous benefit, like was stated. The labeling of the classroom service versus community room, I think it was labeled on the original plans maybe as community room versus classroom, but it's basically the same kind of use, I think. So, it's just a matter of familiarity with the label, I think, but it is the same program that's in the new document. So, I don't see objection there. I really think that the idea of sliding the building forward to Vanham, so close to Vanham Ave, really is a, is a strong gesture to the neighborhood to mitigate the density and also the height of it. It's only about twenty feet high, which is similar to, I think, a couple of the structures on Clinton Ave now. So, you're really kind of matching the density as far as scale with what's on Clinton Ave. The density of the green, I think it's, is it white pine that you're using along that edge there? My goodness. I mean, that's going to just turn that lovely Clinton Ave into a forest backdrop. You're not going to see, you're not going to see anything beyond that, that wonderful array of trees going down that drive. And it will be a benefit to the wildlife in the area. It's a, it's a wonderful gesture. I see a lot of great gestures that you've made here. So, we're down to three variances that you're looking for in my, as outlined here. I'd like to just understand the parking a little bit because I'm a little fuzzy with the, the math here. So, we have eight new units going in, and we have seven existing. How many spaces currently exist on site for the existing seven spaces?
So, we have, we currently have a seven, you know, seven family shelter. It's not seven individual units currently. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there's five parking spaces now, although I will admit the striping is, is not entirely clear right now. And we're proposing seventeen spaces, and we can certainly address, you know, why we think that's sufficient if, if that would please the board.
So, it's roughly one and a half per unit versus two per unit that you're targeting for the eight apartments that you're proposing? Is that, is that about right? If the existing satisfies the use with five spaces, and that's not changing, you're proposing an additional twelve spaces for eight units, bedroom, one or two bedroom apartments, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay. I think that makes a lot of sense. And, you know, it's a huge lot. It's a massive lot. It's a wonderful place. I mean, this, someone could build a big house this size if they wanted to here, and it would be a single-family house. And people do that. So, the fact that we're gifting it to people that are housing challenged and providing a tremendous service here, I think, is a much better use of the space than a single-family house. I, I kind of think we could look at, in my opinion, if, if there was to be a vote, some conditions here. One condition, well, actually, I just want to address that fire access. You did provide tonight for a ladder truck, is that correct? To be able to pull onsite, maneuver, turn around, and exit the site. So, you have access for a large fire apparatus to be onsite and to provide the safety that we need in the city to make sure that the residents there, even though it's a sprinkler building, we still have to worry about fighting a fire. So, I think that that's a tremendous thing. All right. I was thinking a, a condition might be if, this was something maybe Fran, you would agree with, that no vehicular access or pedestrian access would be provided on Clinton Ave, even though the plans don't, don't show it. I think if we had a condition for approval that there'll be no vehicle access in the event that down the road, someone says, "You know what? I'm kind of thinking we want to do that." We would have that as a condition for approval?
I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Because that would just end that whole potential problem with down the road, someone else is using the site. There is a condition on this approval. Clinton Ave is sacred as a dead end, as a residential area, and there's no access from this development onto Clinton Ave. I don't know if we could do anything more than that for a condition on the use because I don't think we can make it a condition that remains a nonprofit serving people. Is that...
I'm legally speaking, I can say, "I don't believe that's possible."
Yeah, I don't think so either. I was struggling with that myself.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe we can condition something like that. That, that has to run with the land and that would go with the deed and whoever transfers it. So, I don't think, I don't think this board has the power to designate what the land is to be used for in perpetuity, so.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
I, that's my, that's my, my opinion, so, yeah.
Then going forward, I would see just that one condition as something that I'd like to see here, but I, I really feel this is a great opportunity to not develop this as a large, single-family structure that services a small population, but really gives back to the community. House of Hope's a tremendous asset that we have here. We want to support them. And the steps that have been taken by this team to mitigate concerns is tremendous. I just see them developing the best scenario possible for this, this site, and so I'd like to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes, Mr. Callahan, the vice chair, Mr. Vice Chairman, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I mean, first, first and foremost, I think, I appreciate again what the House of Hope has done, and I guess it goes without saying, and I appreciate that the, you know, the neighbors obviously have some concerns about this project and have had concerns as throughout, since this project's been before us for the last few months. I do appreciate that they went back to the drawing board and brought back plans after some suggestions by members of the board and some of the public. My main concern was, and always has been, whether or not two structures could be put on there via variance under zoning. And I think I made myself absolutely clear that the intent of zoning, to have two separate structures on a single-family lot, just was not viable and was not, would not meet the intent of zoning. That being said, we're now here with, just now down to three variant, three variances for dimensions, which I'm, I'm still trying to figure out as far as the, the numbers are concerned, what exactly we're dealing with and how much relief we are, especially now at the building. We have a new extension added to the structure, so if it can, no, maybe if we can just go over this real quick. So, right now, parking is easy. We can, we don't have to worry about that. We can figure that out. Lot area per dwelling unit. I know previously he provided his zoning analysis. From what I'm gathering from that, it looks like the required, what's required is seven thousand per dwelling unit. You're providing now, what was previously provided and was planned was three thousand eighty-eight, which would lead relief of three thousand nine twelve. But now with the extension, the new connecting extension, what are we, what are we talking about as far as relief?
So, that's the current number is three thousand eighty-eight. It might be that you're looking at the table from our recent submission? I'm not sure.
I'm looking at whatever was provided zoning analysis from your previous submission.
Okay.
I don't, I don't recall seeing, if we received anything updated to that since the new plans have been submitted.
We, we sent a new submission, a new zoning analysis table with the full revised application at the same time.
Really?
Yep. And I, I think you might be looking at it. I currently have our plans, lot area per dwelling unit is three thousand eighty-eight.
Is this it? Okay. Maybe I, maybe it is. Okay, maybe I am correct. So, you're planning three thousand eighty-eight, which means you need relief for three thousand, about thirty-nine hundred. Right? Okay. And usable open space required is three hundred square feet per dwelling unit, and you're proposing seven fifteen?
We're proposing a hundred and twenty fair, a hundred and twenty-four square feet per dwelling unit.
Hundred and twenty-four.
So, a total of approximately one thousand three hundred and sixty-four.
Okay. So, that puts a set of deficiency of hundred and seventy-six-ish, give or take, so. I want to get on a couple of the things with the new extension that's being added to the classroom. I noticed that there's a roof deck being proposed.
Correct, yep.
So, I just want to understand what the plan is for the roof deck. Is that going to be access for the tenants? Is that just for use by the House of Hope for various, whatever programs that they're, that they're utilizing, or...
That'll be shared space between both programs, just as the space underneath it is.
Okay. So, but tenants have access to it and, and they're...
Yes.
Okay. Is there any, I mean, I just want to understand, is there any monitoring of that, that space? Like, who utilizes it? What can be done up there? I mean, last thing, we're talking about is like, one of the tenants want to have a big barbecue or something and throws...
No, that wouldn't be allowed.
Okay.
That's actually, that space is actually, the door coming from the shelter comes out onto that space. So, and that's where our twenty-four-seven staff person is generally stationed when they're not doing rounds or work in the building.
Okay. No, I was just trying to, if one of the tenants wants to throw a party or something like that and they're out there using, utilizing the deck and I just want to make...
No, that would not be allowed.
Okay. All right. And I'm positive the House of Hope's going to be monitoring that as well as far as keeping them in track, so that's good, that's good to know, so. I mean, that being said, and I understand, again, I understand the concerns of the neighborhood and the neighbors. I think a lot was done to try to, to try to alleviate the concerns about having a second dwelling unit on a single-family lot. And I understand connecting the buildings was one of the, actually, one of the options that was suggested, I would say, which the House of Hope, going back, to their credit, going back to the drawing board, utilized it and actually adding in an extension with that classroom for their program, I think, would be beneficial to, to them and to the community as a whole. I mean, trying to have, no, displace homeless people and trying to bring them back into society, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a benefit. And if it's added on to that to try to give them the opportunity with a classroom or computer room where people can access the internet to try to obtain employment or other services, I think would be beneficial to the House of Hope and what they do for the community. As far as the variances are concerned, the, the ones that are being, that are now needed as far as lot area per dwelling unit and the usable open space, I think they meet the criteria as far as being, as a special hardship with the, with the lay of the property. The public good being additional building to utilize for the services that the House of Hope provides, as well as additional tax base to the city. And I think the intent of zoning for those have been met. So, I, I, I think my concerns prior from previous ones have been alleviated, and I think I could support the project, so. But I'll be willing to listen to my other fellow board members to see what else comes up, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The chair organizes, Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Just clarification, I've heard a couple of different numbers. The height of this project, I show it here as thirty-six feet. Is that right?
So, it's, so accord, this is addressed in the new submission, but it's thirty, thirty-one feet from the lowest grade point.
Okay.
So, that's the maximum height, and it will be less than that when calculated in accordance with the zoning ordinance.
Okay. I can appreciate some of these changes. My big issue was precedent and scope. It doesn't look like the scope has changed all that much. It looks like a couple hundred square footage has been taken off. Now, we're saying this is an addition onto the existing dwelling, but looking at the plans, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is there any internal access from the original dwelling to the proposed dwelling?
Yeah, they're, they're connected via that shared classroom programming space.
Okay. On the plans, it has a wall there. It doesn't have any access from the classroom into the existing dwelling. Am I incorrect on this?
Do you want to clarify? I'll defer to the architects, but I believe that there's access via both sides.
The access from the existing facility into the classroom is by an exterior stair that's on the north side of the addition, or the connector.
So, there's no interior access?
No. The grades are a little bit off, at least as currently imagined, so right now, the, the primary access is through the, the addition. Secondary access is, for the existing building, it is from the outside.
So, it would be from that roof deck down into the...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that, that's a concern, saying it's an addition when there's no access in between the two existing structures. So, to say we're putting an addition on a building is just abutting the building. It's concerning, but, you know, I'll, I'll be open to anything here. You know, I, I'd like what the House of Hope's trying to do. The scope really hasn't changed and precedent really hasn't changed, so I'll, I'll listen to the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. You know, I, I really think that the House of Hope, you went back to the drawing board and really tried to make some consensus and compromise to really work with the, the neighbors and the butters. You know, I think, I'm more a little bit disappointed in terms of the overall size of the scope of the project. I wanted to see the reduction of actual units, but you did downscale, so I think it's a, it's definitely a big compromise, in my opinion. Can you just talk a little bit about, whoever wants to speak about this, kind of the, the units itself? So, if, if I was a neighbor, if I had a concern, I could just go up there and talk to somebody and there'd be like a staff that can be, can address my issues, essentially, if that makes sense? If I, the neighbor's being too loud, or someone's being disruptive, or whatever, I could just go to the door, right, and be like, you know, "Your neighbor's being too loud."
Yeah. A neighbor could do that. Again, as I mentioned, there's someone there. Again, as I mentioned, there's someone there 24/7, um, but we also have a whole housing division. So, um, you know, we, we, the, tenants are tenants. So, you know, they're treated as tenants and they, um, and they have a lease and they have to abide by their lease. And if they fail to abide by their lease, then we document and begin proceedings to either, you know, force them to or make sure that they don't stay there. Um, because, because they're not shelter residents. It's a different level of expectation. We have a maintenance person on staff 24/7. We have the senior administrators, um, that are available 24/7 as well. Issues get addressed with House of Hope. Um, you know, we currently run a, a lot of permanent housing, you know, with support services. The other thing that I just wanted to mention is, there's a 50, there's a 50-year affordability restriction on every project that House of Hope does that is funded by public dollars through the state and, or maybe federal dollars, however the state gets their funds. So, you know, even if something happened to the organization, House of Hope, it would cost a developer a lot of money to buy out any of our projects in order to change the use of what they're currently doing. We're, we're obligated to run these for 50 years. Or whoever owns them is obligated.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. I really think that House of Hope really made a lot of concessions, a lot of compromises. I feel like, um, you know, um, the neighbors, I, hopefully, um, I know some of the concerns of the neighbors weren't all addressed, but they did make a lot of compromises. And I did hear a lot of people saying that they, they, um, support the mission and overall goal of House of Hope. And to me, I think that weighs heavily in terms of, um, the variance and, um, the prerequisites. I think the public good outweighs, um, anything more than, um, some of the concerns that are being addressed. And, and again, you have a, an outlet and a venue for, for expressing concerns. They, they do have a onsite staff personnel and they have a, a whole program and department dedicated to, to supporting not just the, the people who live there, but also the, any other stakeholders or collaborators that are, uh, having any questions or concerns. So, um, I think I can, uh, support this in terms of the project and, and the variance that they're looking for. We did have one condition, um, the, the no, no access on Clinton Ave. If you are minimal to that, we'll move forward with a vote with that condition that we talked about. Any other comments from my colleagues before we move forward with a vote?
I, I just want to say that, that's wonderful that you have that funding, kind of securing the use here rather than it go to, I love college kids. I had three kids that were college kids, but I don't think that neighborhood wants college kids, you know, having wild parties. And so knowing that this use is going to be able to be here for 50 years, that's a wonderful thing. So I'm really glad to hear that.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Any other comments from my colleagues?
I guess with the condition, I probably would suggest put up, either putting up signage or make sure you tell your tenants, if, if this is approved in this condition, putting up some sort of signage over near Clinton Ave, um, in the area or telling your tenants to make sure that no access, they have no, no access by vehicle or pedestrian onto Clinton Ave. Um, it looks like you're going to have fencing there anyways, but just still, just to make sure that there's no question about that, so. That's just a suggestion, so.
That's something you can do as well, the, the signage? Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, can we have a, a motion, please?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZVA 2022-46 for variances for House of Hope at 35 Iron Ave, um, with the, uh, condition that, um, no vehicular or pedestrian access be allowed, um, from this property to Clinton Ave and that it'd be additionally reinforced with signage.
Motion, Mr. McCarthy?
Second.
Second. Second by the Vice Chair, Mr. Callahan. Can we roll call, please?
Uh, Chairman Perrin, or sorry, Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve of conditions.
Uh, Member Callahan.
Approve of condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Briere.
Opposed.
Member Proco.
Approve with conditions.
Uh, Member Havi.
Opposed.
Okay, so four out of the five voting members voted in favor. Uh, motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Um, your variance has been approved. Wish you the best of luck. Thank you for coming on this evening, folks. Sir, um, the petition's over. I'm sorry.
The pen is mightier than the sword, as you will find out.
All right. Moving on to the next business, under new business, we have ZVA dash 2022 dash 56. Petition is a variance. The applicant's William Bernard. Um, William Bernard has applied to his zoning group of appeals for variance approval at 105 and 111 Martin Street. The applicant proposes to split two lots for zoning purposes and construct a new single-family home on 105 Martin Street Lot. The subject property located in the traditional two-family zoning district. Uh, 105 Martin Street Lot requires variance approval per section 5.1 of the low zone ordinance for relief from the minimum front edge and minimum garage front yard setback and minimum lot width requirement per section 5.2.1 for relief from the minimum landscape open space requirement and any other relief required in the low zone ordinance. 111 Martin Street Lot requires variance relief per section 5.1 for relief from minimum front, front edge, minimum side yard setback, minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimum lot width requirement and per section 6.1 for relief from the maximum requirement and any other relief required in the low zone ordinance. Good evening, councilor.
Um, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman. Before you, as a request for a continuance, uh, part of this application is, uh, obtaining approval before the Conservation Commission. We wanted to come before the board with that approval. Uh, we are on for a hearing with the Conservation, uh, Commission on December 14th, so we'd ask, uh, if we could continue this for the first meeting, uh, that you have available in January.
That should be fine. Ms. Sicliano, what, what meeting, January? Is it available? How's the docket look?
It's definitely available. I don't have the exact date, but I, it's definitely available.
January...
So it looks like January 9th?
January 9th.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right. If there's no other comments from my colleagues, we have a motion to continue the matter to January 9th, 2023.
Three, Mr. Chair. Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZVA 20 dash 20, 2022 dash 56 for variance at 105 to 111 Martin Street to be continued to January 9th, 2023.
Second.
Motion, Mr. McCarthy. Second by Mr. Briere. Um, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve, continues.
Member Callahan.
Approve, continuous to January 9th, 2023.
Member McCarthy.
Approve, continuance to January 9th, 2023.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proco.
Approve, continuance, January 9th, 2023.
Member Havi.
Approve, continuance.
All right. Council, you've been approved. We'll see you?
Thank you very much.
In the new year. Thanks for coming on this evening. Moving on, under new business, we have ZVA dash 2022 dash 57. It's a variance. The applicant is Henry Donaldson, property located at 270 Christian Street. Mr. Donaldson has applied to the zoning group of appeals to divide the lot at 270 Christian Street and construct a new single-family home. Lot A will have the existing single-family home. Lot B will be the site of the new single-family home. The property is located in traditional single-family zoning district. The proposal requires a variance for Lot B under section 5.1 for minimum lot size and any other relief required in the low zone ordinance. Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir.
I'm the owner of, uh, 270 Christian Street, which is a 12,600 square foot lot. Um, and if you guys will take a look at, uh, A, which is, um, the plot plan for that neighborhood, what I've done is I've, I've gone through that, that, that block, basically. There's a couple of blocks which surround my property. My property's in the green and I'd like to subdivide it into two separate 6,300 square foot lots. And you'll see it's surrounded by, um, uh, the vast majority of the lots around it are 5,000, 4,000, 4,600. There's, uh, only in my actual subdivision are they 6,300. There is, uh, two lots in that 6,300, actually three lots in that 60, in that, uh, between Carey and Christian that are over 12,000 square feet. One's my neighbor on either side. One's 13, about 13,800. And then the other, uh, lot on Christian Street is 12,600. So that's the original subdivision map. Now let's look at B. The only reason I gave you guys B is because it shows the, um, setback from my lot line to my neighbor, um, to the, basically south of me. It's about 11 feet. I measured it to the fence. I'm not sure exactly whether the fence is exactly on the line, but it's about 11 feet. So, um, that just shows you their house in relationship to my house or my proposed, uh, property. And then we go to C, which is, um, C is a, um, we took a larger view. This is one with the orange, orange on it. And this is a larger view with all the lots that are smaller than 7,000 square feet, sort of within, I don't know, roughly a 300, uh, 300-foot diameter. So you can see there's quite a few lots that are less than 700, 7,000 square feet. I did not go through and figure out the lot sizes of every single one of them, but anyway, we did just pick the ones that were 7,000 or less. And then, um, then on a larger scale, this map is the map that has, uh, this is the whole, the whole zoning area, FCP, I think it is, or I'm not sure. TSF. So all the orange on this are lots that are 7,000 or smaller and it's?
They're all less than 7,000.
Right. Less than 7,000. So you can see it's riddled with lots less than 7,000. And then the last, um, item, did everybody, does everybody have, I have an extra one of these. You guys need another one over there?
Well, good. Thank you, sir.
Anyway, this is, this is the lot from Carey Street. The first picture is the lot from Carey Street. You can see it's been, there's piles of rubbish on it, you know, there's a broken down swing in the very background. It's pretty dilapidated. The next picture is a picture of, um, my neighbor. And there was an attempt by the original owner, um, to block out the neighbor's, um, fence that's where they store all their broken down equipment. And the, the, the next picture is a close-up of all that broken down equipment. So that's, that's my neighbor with the 1300, 800 square foot lot, 13,800 square foot lot. The next picture is just a picture of my neighbor, um, to the south. And that just shows the, the tightness of the neighborhood. The houses are all, um, I think they're all roughly 10, you know, 10 feet from the property line. I, I can't check that for sure, but as you drive around the neighborhood, you can see they're, they're fairly snugly installed. This is a picture of the, sort of the neighborhood. It's, it's pretty identical on both sides. And this is Carey Street. And the last picture is, one of the last houses just shows how tight one of the houses is. So there's, um, now, um, what I'm asking for, I think, is, is really just a lot line variance. We're, we're, oh, the last, the last, um, is a survey, um, in the plot plan with, um, with the house, uh, one, a proposed house, and it meets all the setbacks. So essentially what I'm looking for is, is a variance for the lot size from 7,000 to 6,300.
Thank you.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. If you have any, if you don't have any other further comments, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, just petition on opposition. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Neil Flint. I live at 205 10th Street. I'm in a butter to Carey Street and the proposed property. So as I can, uh, understand, there needs to be three requirements to, to grant the variance, the special hardship. I don't see that this thing has any particular special hardships. It's not a unique shape or, or anything. The property is, uh, just undersized. And it was purchased out of a bank foreclosure just this year, uh, which I understand is still dispute going on about that. However, uh, it's not like the owner wouldn't have known that this property is, is non-conforming to split into two. And then in terms of public good, uh, the lot currently, despite the petitioner saying it has a lot of junk on there, that's all just surface things. My key thing, though, is this property has more than 20 mature trees, uh, most of which would have to be removed to, and to fit this house onto this lot. Unfortunately, the same kind of thing happened kitty-corner from my lot several years ago. There was a large lot. The petitioner was able to split it without a variance because it was so large, but he took down all the mature trees from, it was a single, or a single structure, two-family house. Took the old house down, took down all the trees. Now we have two houses there with no trees. So in terms of public good thing, I think even though we don't have a zoning variance or zoning constrictions about, you know, what you do with the trees on your property, losing this many mature trees in this neighborhood would not be good. All the other houses on Carey Street do not have many trees because they are so small and the houses take up the lot. All the other houses on Carey Street do not have many trees because they are so small and the houses take up the lot. And then what is the intent of the zoning here? Isn't the intent of the zoning of seven thousand square feet is to move away from smaller lots, right? All of the lots he's mentioning were built in the, in the forties and fifties. There have been no recent lots that have been subdivided that are undersized. The, and then the lots he mentioned, his two neighboring lots on Christian Street are, one of them is the same plan, twelve, twelve thousand six hundred. So what, if we, if you grant this variance, what would prevent the next person from wanting to subdivide that lot? End up with two more undersized lots, and then the lot on the other side property could again be subdivided if you set a precedence of allowing a subdivision below seven thousand. Now, you know, I'm not opposed to, we know we need more housing. I think that'd be great to do. The, the petitioner emphasized all the small lots in the neighborhood. But I also took a quick look, and there is at least ten lots within the three or four block neighborhood of this house that are over fourteen thousand square feet. They all have single-family homes on them now, or some two-family homes, but there is room in this neighborhood, if you purchase the right lot, to do subdivisions that meet the zoning requirement and provide additional housing. But I don't see that that is happening with this particular plan. One other minor point is the plan that was submitted, I didn't see that it addressed anything about landscaping or addressing things like that. The house that he's proposing to by the, by the plan, which was a simple plan, the existing houses that are on Carey Street that are on these undersized lots were also undersized houses back in the sixteen, nineteen sixty when they were put in. They're all ranch houses, no garages. They're on the smaller side. This petitioner is proposing a two-story house with a garage that we'll be imposing compared to the other houses in the neighborhood. And considering especially it has to be in an undersized lot. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Holmes. I've lived at two sixty Christian Street for all of my life, my parents' house, since nineteen fifty-seven. But I've taken over all the duties there and I pay for all the freight. We've already had a bunch of land around us that have been two into one, two into one, by a land developer that didn't care to live there or anything. He was just trying to milk it like a cash cow with the attendant degradation of quality of life for all of us surrounding. To the Zoning Board of Appeals, this is a response to a request for variance by Henry Donaldson of Somerville, Mass to subdivide property located at two seventy Christian Street, Lowell, Mass. I am an abutter to this property. Three single-family houses on other lots nearby have already been subdivided and neighborhood has been subjected to increased density of people within a given space. The lot at two seventy-five Christian Street, just across the street, was bought by subcontractor, subdivided, and another house built. Lot at two sixty-five Christian was subdivided and contractor built second house. Just around the corner at what was one eighty-sixth Tenth Street, again, two houses in place of one. Cars are parked now on lawns and on both sides of the street due to spillover from additional residents. This request is based on greed by contractor who wants to make a profit, who is not sympathetic to the well-being of the neighborhood and who will not be around to experience the consequences. This project will result in a diminished quality of life for everyone and will be especially felt by those of us who have been living here for many years and still trying to keep Christian Hill an attractive place to live. This request should be denied. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening.
My name's Ron Lassad. I own the property on nineteen Carey Street where he's planning on building. And like my neighbor Neil said, we're all little tiny houses, thousand square foot. He wants to plant something bigger than what we all are accustomed to. And I'm just against it. If he was planting something smaller, maybe I'd be all for it, but that's all I got to say.
Thank, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael Dowden. My wife and I are, we live at twenty Carey Street. We have bought the land next to it and, like Ron said, we just oppose the size of the house. We understand that it's two lots, but the size that he's proposing seems to be a little big for the neighborhood. That's, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening.
My name is Mike Demange, and I live at forty-one Carey Street. And I've been up, I've been there for thirty-five years. And I'm opposing his build also because I, I don't understand how he can put the house there. The property is kind of small as it is if you took a ride by. The other concern I have is in the wintertime, when, when we have snow, it's hard for the people that are up there even to get through. I, I just oppose the whole thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? An opposition? An opposition? All right, scene on that portion of property is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? All right. The public hearing is closed for the moment. We can open questions, comments to the board. Chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Upon your initial appearance, I supported your efforts to pursue such a project. I still do. I still do. But I'm going to reserve final judgment until I hear my colleagues speak. My concern is the size. The size. I'm not concerned about the lot size. Because I, I believe with respect to the lot size, you subdividing it, it fits the neighborhood character. But my question is to, it's a beautiful home, but it does deviate from the character of the neighborhood. And I'm, I'm, I do have a question as to whether it's too large a home for the existing neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The, if I just can, it's a fifteen hundred square foot home. It's two stories, so it covers less lot, but then it has the two-car garage, which, you know, arguably is not necessary. I can, I can abandon the garage. I just thought, people like garages, what can I say? So I don't have a problem with, with building, you know, I think fifteen hundred square feet gives you a, a nice three-bedroom, two-bath, possibly two-and-a-half-bath house. The garage is on the side of that particular home. And anyway, yeah, so that's, if that's, if that's going to stop it, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll pick a different...
Well, as I said, I, I'm not stating opposition. I'm withholding judgment. I just have a question about that. And hopefully I'll, I'll learn something that enables me to, to make a better informed decision. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You submitted a plot plan, and it has in a dimensional and density summary, lot A and lot B listed as proposed, one being seventy-two hundred square feet and one being four thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square feet.
The engineer made a mistake, and on this plot plan, he corrected it, which I got... Would do the correct thing, and I didn't really look at it. I didn't really see the error in that until the other day when I was putting the sign back up that had been blown off or removed. So I corrected it. I had the engineer correct it, and you have the updated correction.
Right. I would just, if this were to go forward to a vote tonight, that I'd like to make a condition that we resubmit the plot plan with the correct information, the density table. You are able, so it's about a ten percent decrease in area. So we're looking at deviation from zoning about about ten percent, which to me seems like a reasonable ask. You are able to provide all of the required setbacks, frontage, and open space. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you're able to meet all of the criteria for zoning with the exception of the ten percent deviation in lot area? Okay. It does have wonderful mature trees. And you didn't provide a landscape plan showing how you're going to preserve at least three of them or some level of them. Do you have any idea what you can do?
If, if the neighbors really want those trees, for the most part, I think that there's quite a bit of backyard, so those trees in the back could stay. I mean, the stuff in, the trees across the front need to go. The neighbor to the right wanted those trees removed because she thinks they're a danger. I personally think they're probably a danger as well, because that sits at the very top of the hill. Those are fairly mature white pines. And in a good blow, I think you'd see a couple of those go down. There's no, they're not in a dense forest. They're sticking up. But, you know, if you guys, if, 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 again, if you want me to keep the trees, I, I can keep at least three of them, and I can probably keep more because they're, they're really right along the lot lines. They're, they're really outside of the building envelope. So there's, there's a reasonable chance that we could keep most of them, and that would save me money. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, mature trees in neighborhoods are, you know, a wonderful benefit for sure. And to lose all of the trees and then be basically looking to start from scratch or not and not have any trees, I think would be a, a hardship for sure for me to see as a resident of the city. So I'd like to see an attempt to preserve a minimum of three of the existing trees that exist. I don't know how many exist on the lot, but it looks like you probably have seven or eight or ten.
Well, there's, there's, you know, whoever was spoke to, to the number of trees, there's at least twenty. You counted them? Yeah, twenty? Yeah. And there's, there's, you know, quite frankly, again, the neighbors to my south, who I think objected to the size of the house and to the closeness of the house, they just cut down a maple tree that was probably twenty inch in diameter that was right on their property in the corner there. They had it taken down. And they actually approached the original owner of this property to remove some of the, some of the white pines there. And he refused to work with them. But they did, you know, and as far as, look, I'm, I'm, I'm an outdoorsman and I, I'm, I'm a big believer in trees. Nobody's planted any trees in that neighborhood. They, there's plenty of room in their backyards. Why wouldn't you?
Sir, sir, can, can we just?
Anyway.
Thank, thank you.
That we, there's enough, there's a, anyway, so the trees is not a problem. If you guys want to keep three trees, I can certainly keep three and probably more.
Right. I, I think I'd like to see a condition that we maintain a minimum of three of the existing trees and maybe work with DPD to develop a landscape plan that best does that or reaches that goal. If you're amenable to that. Okay. And then the last one is the garage in the building drawing is turned ninety degrees from the garage in your site plan?
Yeah.
Okay. So the dimension that you're going to have is a twenty by twenty-three garage with the narrow dimension being...
I don't have that in front of me.
Because...
What's your concern?
Well, is it going to be a, it's a narrow garage, I guess? Is it usable? Is, so it's, it's drawn at twenty-three for a reason. Right?
Oh, it's, it's twenty-three deep.
Twenty-three, I think it's...
From front to back.
I think it's twenty-one deep, twenty-three wide.
Right, so that's a two-car garage. Twenty-three wide.
Look, I, you're presenting something here that's a little bit twisted because you have a floor plan that doesn't match the site plan.
Sorry.
And the garage piece. And if the floor plan is what you need to have, then your site plan needs to be modified and your side yard setback is going to be reduced from fifteen point six-seven to, you know, twelve point six-seven or something, whatever it is, the difference is.
Okay, so on this site plan, the garage is twenty-one feet wide and twenty-three feet deep on the site.
Is that your intent? Because your floor plan shows, I think, a twenty-three-foot-wide garage.
My intent is what shows on, on...
On, on the site plan?
On the site plan. I don't want to blow any setbacks whatsoever. There's no point in it.
So then as a condition, I'd like you to match the floor plan to the site plan, that you correct the floor plan to match the site plan?
Yes.
And we could just make that as another condition?
Yeah.
I agree with you. I like the idea of the narrower garage because it makes the site a lot more green space in that side yard. So I think that's where it belongs, so. I have no further questions, but I think this makes a lot of sense with the need for housing in this city and the fact that you're able to accommodate all of the criteria for zoning with the exception of the ten percent reduction in lot area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chair, Mr. Kelly. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I have the same issue, concerns as Dennis as far as the trees, keeping as many, any as possible. And I would certainly love to, love to see more than three, but if we can, at least a minimum of three, that'd be great if we can do that. And also the site plan, as far as I was trying to figure out how the structure, how the structural layout on the, on the proposed new plot, where the driveway is, what, what are you going to need for curb cut, none of that's, I understand we got to, baby steps. We got to start with the, whether or not the approval of the lots would be sufficient. But that's something that I was hoping to see, but if we can condition that as well, it'd be great. I don't, I mean, looking at the lot sizes, I, I appreciate you providing all this other further information. I'm looking at one of your submissions that you provided as far as planned, it looks like the plan from dating back to eighteen forty-six? Nineteen forty-six? It's hard, it's hard to decipher, but it does...
I pulled it off.
It's, it's, I mean, it's...
Cities, what?
But, but I, yeah, and I appreciate, I'm looking at what was proposed in that area of Christian Street. And it looks like it's mostly, what's, what was, back then, what was the city's hope and plan was for those lots to be about sixty-three hundred feet each. And your lot at, on two sixty does extend back to what Carey Street, but what was back in nineteen, eighteen forty-six or nineteen forty-six is called Proposed Street, which means it wasn't a street at that point, but it was, eventually became Carey Street. And I see that the adjoining lots on that street on your side, the Carey Street, are all sixty-three hundred, sixty-three hundred square feet, which would match what you're proposing to do on your property. So that being said, I mean, it looks like potentially that would, you know, would benefit the intent, possibly intent of zoning as far as seeking a variance and bringing that lot to what was proposed originally by the city back in, I guess, eighteen, nineteen forty-six. As far as, and I know working backwards, as far as the public good, losing a lot of trees, yep, that is an issue, but also adding another property that would be in addition to the housing crisis that we presently have, but also benefit to the city as far as another property on the tax roll that has a new address for Carey Street and to that, to that extent. So splitting the lots to, to what should have been, looks like sixty-three hundred, which is what possibly was the intent back in, when the lots are being proposed, seems reasonable to me, understanding the, the concerns of the neighbors. I do appreciate you trying to do a two-car garage, so because of getting cars off the street, that would be, that would be fantastic if it could still be done. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I just want to tail into a situation, a thing. We did get some correspondence from a gentleman regarding pending litigation as far as the property, it would be the, the former owner. I don't believe he was here. I don't, I don't recall him speaking. I don't, I don't recall him speaking. Fran, nobody on Zoom, correct?
We do have a few people on Zoom, but I don't know if they're.
No answer?
For the petition, yeah.
Just, just for the record, we, the board did get something from this gentleman, Mr. Grandalski. I understand you have pending litig, there's some pending litigation. As a lawyer, I just did the extra research and looked it up. I mean, I looked on the registry of deeds. I understand this was a foreclosure sale, but from what I saw on the, on the title, it seems clear to me that you are the record title holder of the property. I understand Mr. Grandalski has, or you have a pending summary process action against him for post, post foreclosure.
Yeah, we're waiting for a summary judgment. He didn't show up with any proof that the foreclosure was done incorrectly.
Yeah.
And it's in front of the judge right now. I just finished paying his water and sewer and, and trash bill, which he hadn't paid for the past two months. And prior to that, the bank has paid it for the past seven years.
Okay.
I mean, this is an ongoing problem.
Yeah. And I believe in his correspondence, Mr. Grandalski kind of was hinting, like he was asking for a time for, for this board to consider giving him time while he proceeds the legal realm. And he tried to claim, I mean, filed an appeal, but when I looked at the docket and the paperwork, I don't see any appeal pending. I didn't see anything filed with the appeals court. To your, as you pointed out, the docket clearly indicates there was a summary judgment that was just heard by the judge, taken under advisement. Look, I don't know what the judge is going to do. You guys can work it out on that end. But I, I was satisfied based on my research that you are the, you are the present property owner, owner of the, owner of the property. If things change in the, in the courts, then I guess. Well, I guess just cross that road when we get to it. But I, um, so I, I, I think that I'm satisfied that you are, you are the property owner, holder. You are, you know, you're standing in that, in that position properly before us with this application. And I think we can rule on this today. I don't think that what's been provided as far as the legal from Mr. Grandalski is satisfactory to me. So I just wanted to get that on the record, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I have, just to square something with me, I have a floor plan where we show the front of the property. And then I have a plot plan that shows a very different front of the property. I show grass from the corner of the covered porch across to where the driveway would be to go into the two-car garage on the left, right?
Yeah.
On the plot plan, it looks like we're having a driveway starting at the corner of the covered porch all the way to the left.
The driveway is 21 feet wide. It's right in front of the garage on the left-hand side of the house for the plot plan. What I submitted was, you know, not the house that is necessarily going to be built there, but I, I submitted a house that could be built there that, that fit the setbacks. So, you know, I will, you know, I have to come up with a final plan. And I think that's part of what you guys have talked about.
Right. So we're talking about planting trees, keeping green space. The, the mock-up looks great, but my concern would be, are we going to concrete from the corner of the covered porch all the way left to the property line?
No. No, no, no.
That's, so that's what it's showing on this, on this plot plan. It shows 18-foot garage right to the left of the covered porch.
But if you look at right above Kerry Street, there's a, there's a note. It says, "Proposed 18-foot wide bituminous concrete driveway."
Right. And the arrow's going right to the left of the covered porch, right?
And then if you look up a little higher, you'll see 15.67. That's the, that's the setback from the edge of the driveway to the property line. So there's 15 feet on the left of the property. And then to the right, you see 28.33 plus another 10 feet. So you've got 38, 33 from the side of the driveway to the right of the.
Right. On this plot plan, it's showing a concrete driveway in front of the two-car garage.
Correct.
Correct. On this, it's not showing, it's showing green space.
Oh, right, yes.
So in order to get a.
This is, this is what we proposed for a footprint.
Right. So in order to get cars into the garage, because the entrance is going to be on the left side.
No, no, it won't. It, that, that's misleading.
So you're going to have the entrance to the two-car garage in the front?
Straight in.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that, no, I.
So I, I mean, I, I would be fine with it, with the condition that we're changing the floor plans to the entrance of the two-car garage in the front of the property instead of to the left.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess two, two of my concerns were addressed. One, again, I would like to see a landscaping plan. Because, yeah, trees are very important these days. And we would like to see, you know, minimal impact. You also addressed the, the concern about the potential litigation, which is, was my main concern because I didn't know if we would have any exposure from a board perspective if things changed. So I wasn't sure about that. But to what member Havi just mentioned about the garage, the differences in the landscaping, I'm just wondering if we should continue this and to get a final plan in place. That's just my thought, let the board, the rest of the members, you know, you know, make their suppositions on that. But, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's, it's viable, but I would like to see a more complete presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. Sir, I think this project, you're trying to divide the lot and build a new single-family home on lot B. It's, has a lot of merit to it. You know, to, to my colleagues' comments, I did have concerns with some of the legal pending ownership of the site and property. But, uh, but after hearing my colleagues, I think I feel a little more comfortable in, in going forward with this and voting on it tonight as well. I think you heard all the comments of my colleagues. Talked about resubmitting, updated plot plan, landscaping, you know, preserving the trees, a minimum of at least three trees. Maybe working with DPD could be more updated or correct on floor plans and site plan that, that corresponds and match. And you are amenable and agreeable to, to all those concerns that the board have, sir?
I didn't understand that last sentence. What was?
You agreeable to all the comments, especially the, the conditions?
Yeah, yeah.
That we talked about?
Yeah. It's, you guys are being very fair.
Okay. Any other comments from my colleagues? Mr. McCarthy, floor is yours, sir?
I, I would just like to ask Fran if you could respond to the idea of putting the onus on DPD to work on that landscape plan versus continue the application to develop the landscape plan? And then we vote on the landscape plan after they've worked with you to develop it, basically? I mean, does it make sense for us to just condition it?
Yes, that's fine.
Versus?
We have a landscape architect in-house that can review it.
And come up with a?
We wouldn't come up with it, the applicant, it would only be on the applicant to come up with it, but then we can have design review in-house and make sure that it's something that's acceptable and preserves as many trees as possible.
Right. Especially with the concept that we don't want to weaken the trees to the point where they become a hazard. So we want to be able to preserve the trees and they can be sustained in whatever stage they're left.
Yes.
Once the construction's in place. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have no objections.
I have a question. So Fran, so let's say we go forward, we approve it, but then the next step, obviously, would be whatever they're proposing as far as thing. Would this be subject to an A and R or would this have to go to planning? Or it depends on whatever.
That's a good question. If the, if you're granting a variance for frontage, then yes, it would need to get subdivision approval from the planning board.
Well, we're, we're only granting the variance for lot size, right?
Okay. If it's not for frontage, then it does not need to get subdivision approval. It would just be an A and R.
Okay. All right. Just, I was, just, just checking. All right. Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan, Mr. McCarthy. Any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, can you have a motion, please?
We just go over the conditions, I just want to make sure we're clear.
Oh, yeah. Mr. McCarthy, you mind just running down the conditions?
The two conditions that I think we have talked about here is, the first one is that the applicant will maintain a minimum of three existing trees and work with DPD to develop the best approach to do that. And the second condition is that the applicant will correct the site plan dimensional summary to show lot A and lot B as 6,300 square feet and to correct the floor plan to match the site plan with the entrance to the garage off of Kerry Street.
Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson, you agreeable to those conditions, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That being said, can you have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-57 for variance at 270 Christian Street with the previously two mentioned conditions.
A second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve with conditions.
Member Havi.
Approve with conditions.
All right, so you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you and have a good evening. And Mr. Kelly, on all these plans were submitted to you for the record, if you needed. The one that missed.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I can take them.
All right. Moving on, and our next agenda item on the new business, we have ZBA-2022-59. The petition is a variance. The applicant is Dylan Lee, property located at 19 Court Street. Mr. Lee has applied to the zoning board of appeals to divide the lot at 19 Court Street and construct a new two-family home. Lot A will be the site of the existing three-family home. Lot B will be the site of the new two-family home. The property is located in traditional two-family zoning district. The proposal requires variance for lot A under section 5.1 for minimum lot size, minimum usable open space per dwelling unit and lot area per dwelling unit. Variance is for lot B under section 5.1 for minimum lot size and minimum lot area per dwelling unit and leave for both lots required in the laws or orders. Good evening.
Good evening. Chairman Peck, gentlemen, attorney John Cox, 375 Gorham Street. I represent Dylan Lee, who is the owner of the property at 19 Court Street. Mr. Lee is here this evening. What I, we are requesting is several variances. 19 Court Street currently consists of about 11,000 square feet. There is a three-family home on the, on the property. And there is, and what we, we are requesting to do is subdivide the lot to, obviously, the three-family would, would remain where it is. Through our subdivision, the 6,000-square-foot lot would be developed with, with variances to a, to build a duplex there. We would have parking for both the three-family and for the duplex, off-street parking. We would provide parking for, for both, both lots. We would request three variances for lot A, which is where the, the three-family is currently. The minimum lot area in this district, we'd, we'd need a variance for that. We'd need a variance for the minimal usable open space and a variance for the minimum lot area per dwelling. As far as lot B, where the duplex would, proposed duplex would go, we would need a variance for the minimum lot area and the minimum, minimum lot area per dwelling unit. We feel this is a good proposal in the sense that, first of all, we think that this proposal fits with the neighborhood. We have done a zoning analysis, which is part of your, your package, which shows the neighborhood and the various lots in the neighborhood. It should be noted that on that variance, I mean, on that zoning analysis, there are 14 lots on Court Street itself, all of which are smaller than both proposals by, by Mr. Lee. Also, there are another, other lots in the direct vicinity that are smaller as well, as is pointed out in that zoning analysis. And, you know, we think, so we think this would fit there. Clearly, the master plan in the city of Lowell calls for good housing, quality housing in the city. This is an opportunity to turn, again, a 6,000-square-foot vacant lot into housing, good new housing for two families who could stay in Lowell, continue to live in Lowell, invest in Lowell, work in Lowell, what have you. There are many benefits associated with this. But the least of which is the tax value the city would receive from a duplex as opposed to a vacant lot. We expect the duplexes to go for, in the vicinity of $300,000 each. So it'd be a sizable tax advantage for the city. Again, it fits, it fits the neighborhood. The parking would be, again, off-street, so the neighbors wouldn't have to worry about more cars on those streets. And it clearly does not derogate from the intent of the zoning. If you look at, in the neighborhood, clearly, there are many, many lots, as I said, smaller than these, these that are proposed. I want to point out that Mr. Lee on November the 20th, Saturday, November 20th, about a week or so ago, pamphleted the direct neighborhood and let them know that he had this idea for this, this land. Mr. Lee, like I said, owns the land and has owned it for a number of years and invited the neighbors to come over to the land, to, to the house on Saturday for coffee and donuts. And he was going to present them with the plan and show them the plan. None of them showed up, but he tried. And he's had many, many one-on-one conversations with some of the direct neighbors. One of them is here tonight that I think you'll hear from. So for all these reasons, we request that these variances be approved. These type of situations don't fit in every neighborhood in this city, clearly. We feel that in this one, in this neighborhood, we feel that, that it does fit and it would be a good fit. So Matt Hammer is here, obviously, with all the plans and can go over any, any questions any of you may have. But we would hope that the board would look favorably. Thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you, Counselor. If you have no further comments, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? An opposition? An opposition? Seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
How you doing? My name's John McNeil. I live at 20, I have 23 and 27 Court Street. I live right next door to the, the existing three-family. The proposed building's going to be on the opposite side. I know Mr. Lee for a while. And we have a, it's a small, tight-knit neighborhood. There's not that many, like 14 houses. And, you know, I, the signs have been up for a while, so the neighbors have been talking like what's going on. And, you know, the signs have been up for a while, so the neighbors have been talking, like, what's going on and what's happening. I don't see any opposition from any of the neighbors. It's just a vacant lot doing nothing right now. I think it'll be good for the neighborhood. I don't think anybody has any objections.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearings closed. We're going to open up questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to talk about the site plan a little bit. You're changing the character of the pavement for the three-family quite a bit. I just want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly. Right now, on the, I think it's the south side, let me see where that north arrow is, yeah, the south side of the three-family, that whole area is paved, right to the property line, to the building, to the shed in the back, to the street. That's just one entire paved space.
That's correct.
And you're proposing to have green space?
Yes. We feel as though that all of this pavement doesn't need to be that way. So we wanted to increase the landscaping in and around that paved area so that we have green space that'll replace that existing pavement.
Tremendous. And you're doing the same thing on the other side of the three-family where there's a phenomenal amount of pavement again.
That's correct. So, you know, one of the variances that we're requesting is usable open space. So we wanted to make sure that we put our best effort forward to create as much green space as possible for that existing parcel.
You did not show trees or landscaping other than green on the site plan indicating grass. So there is a substantial number of mature trees in the back edge and a couple on the front edge, if they're fruit trees or something in that side yard.
So this here is the existing conditions plan, which you don't have a copy of. But what we have here is all that pavement we just discussed. All this pavement here with a metal carport.
Right.
And then we have a trampoline, some planters, and so on on the property. We could, you know, right now, on the, on the back of the property, we're going to be providing infiltration for the roof runoff in the impervious area for the project. But we could put some shade trees out along the street, out in front, here and here.
Okay.
And it's going to be a little bit difficult to do that in front of the existing house.
So the shade trees or the trees that exist in the back are in that border paper street, maybe?
Well, that could very well be. Yeah. So we have a paper street out behind the property.
All right. And so that might be where those existing trees are.
Which is, yeah, which is not an area that we feel as though we are going to go and modify in any way.
Well, I'd love to see three large shade trees, you know, one on that three-family lot and maybe two on the new.
Yeah, so we could put one here.
Right, right, yeah.
We could put one here and then we could put one here.
That'd be terrific. That'd be, that'd be fine. Okay.
Mr. McCarthy, we can certainly work with Francesca and DPD as to how, how best to put a landscape plan together, clearly.
But I'd like it to target shade trees because we need to target heat island effect in the city, especially. And this neighborhood doesn't have shade trees on that street as much as it probably could, so I think that I'd like to see that. All right. And I think that the tremendous benefit of getting these subsurface infiltration systems is terrific because right now, all that pavement probably drains into the street. Or worse. Who knows where it goes, but the neighbor's yard. So.
It's going into the street.
I think it is, right. So having that drain into subsurface infiltration is tremendous. And then we get additional housing as well, and we have off-street parking all accounted for. So I think that this is a good plan. I wish you were a little closer with the numbers for lot area. But, you know, it's in that neighborhood and there's a lot of gray area over there, so I think I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan, the vice chair. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I mean, the proposal seems to make sense to me, especially in that area. It's a large lot and I appreciate counsel providing the breakdown of the lots in the area that show many that are well below what you're seeking, even to, even when we split this lot. One question I do have, though, as far as the existing, the existing structure of three-family is not going to be touched. First, I'm not a huge fan of stacked parking, but obviously, if that's the only, if that's all we can deal with, then fine. But with the three-family in the existing lot, what's the layout as far as parking is concerned there right now? Is it stacked or is it?
It is stacked, yes.
Okay. I mean, is that, well, is that Mr. Lee's? I mean, does Mr. Lee live there or is that, or is it just tenants'? I just want to understand if there's going to be, there's no issues as far as people parking, you know, which one goes to which unit and who goes there?
There is not currently right now. They will be assigned.
Okay.
For each unit.
Okay. No, it's just, it's not, it's not in the plans, obviously. With the new unit going in, with the, after the vote, if a new, if approved, then you have the new duplex possibly going in next door, then parking is going to be, obviously, even more susceptible. And I'm sure you got plenty of on-street parking to that effect as well. So, right. But now with the new, potential new duplex going in, it's going to be even worse.
Right. So the, all the parking will be assigned.
Okay.
To each of the units.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan, if I may, Mr. Lee has owned the property for about two and a half, three years. He's never had an issue with the parking there with the.
Okay. No, I was just curious because, like I said, just it's adding, adding more, more units to the area may make parking a little bit more difficult, but, I mean, I'm sure that Mr. Lee is going to be able to, certainly be able to work it out. I'm just, just kind of curious, especially, just trying to get a gauge from what the existing, the situation of the existing unit as stands right now, so. Other than that, I mean, again, I don't, I really don't see any issues. I think you meet the criteria for variance. And I would look cold-heartedly, as I said, I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I like the project. I know the neighborhood. I think we need multifamily houses. With all the parking being off-street, I think that's a plus. I really don't have any concerns. The lot size and that whole neighborhood seems to fit this. I'm, some of the paperwork that was submitted, I'm pretty sure you're on the larger side than most of the lots in the area. So I have no questions and concerns on this.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with my fellow members. I think this, I'm looking at the property now. I think it's a good project. Yeah, I am also not a fan of stacked parking, but, I mean, it, I mean, there is not much else you can do other than stacked parking in that type of neighborhood. But the fact that you are, you know, making the extra effort and being proactive about the green space and the trees, I think, you know, that's commendable. But I, I think this would fit right into the neighborhood, so I would be voting in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly revitalizing a vacant lot to the benefit of new residents, the neighborhood itself, and the city's much-needed housing stock. That is a terrific parlay. Win-win-win. I wish I could put a few of those parlays together myself. So I look very favorably upon this and I'm really encouraged by the project and I wish you the very best.
Thank you, Mr. Briere. Mr. Cox, Mr. Lee, I really think this is a really good project. I honestly think you showed a lot of restraint in terms of what you wanted to do. And the relief you're seeking, I think, is very, it could have been a lot more. So I really think Lot B and the new two-family home is going to actually fit in very well with the, with the character of the neighborhood. And again, I think, in my opinion, you showed a lot of restraint in terms of what, what you could have done and then what, what you plan on doing. So that, thank you for that, sir.
We spent a lot of time with Francesca and everybody and we appreciate all the help.
Thank you. And DPD and Mr. Segliano, the director of Segliano is amazing, great resource for the city and for the residents. So, so thank you for your hard work. I know it's, you get a lot of good and bad from, from everybody, so it's appreciated. Again, I have concerns. I think this, this subdivision in this two-family home will fit in nicely. Again, no, no people in oppositions, so I agree with the speaker earlier that no news is good news usually. So, so again, I have no concerns. I think it's going to be a nice project. And if my colleagues have no further comments, we'll move forward with the vote. Emotions.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I'm just spitballing here, counsel. I'm just thinking, I know, I know, I trust Mr. Lee's going to do what he's, what he's saying he's going to do, but just for purposes of this, would he be amenable to a condition that stacked parking on the Lot A, three-family, just be dedicated, each stacked parking space be dedicated to individual units? Just so I can, just so, just to save, save everybody the, everybody the trouble. Okay. I know he's going to do it. I know it's only, it's for his benefit, otherwise, I don't want him getting, be getting nasty phone calls from his tenants left and right. But I think that would be beneficial if we can condition that. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Great comment and great condition. Attorney Cox, seeing you and your client are amenable to that condition, there is no further comments from my colleagues. Oh, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir. Go ahead.
I just want to ask Francesca, you know, I'm so enamored with the idea of removing so much pavement here, especially from the east side of the three-family, or west side, I think of it. Anyway, so I'm going to be disappointed, to say the least, if I drive by there in two years or whenever this is done and see that pavement that we were hoping was going to go away still there. So we're on this, right? This plan is the one?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. If there's no further comments from my colleagues, we have a motion.
I think I have two conditions. First condition is that the Lot One, Three Family is going to have stacked parking dedicated to individual units. And the second condition is that the Lot One will have no less than one street tree and Lot Two will have no less than two street trees provided.
Clarification, it's A and B.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, Lot One is A and Lot Two is B.
That's, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. And you amend what's with those conditions, Counselor?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA twenty twenty-two dash fifty-nine for variances at Nineteen Court Street with the two previously mentioned conditions.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by the vice chair, Ms. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the conditions.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve it conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approve. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
You've been approved.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Francesca and Peter and Dylan. They're excellent, as you know, and so.
Agreed.
Let them know that we appreciate it.
Thank, thank, thank you, Counselor. Appreciate it. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, under new business, we have ZBA dash twenty twenty-two dash sixty. Petition is a special permit. The applicant is New Yen and Sons LLC, property located at nine fifteen Patoka Street. New Yen and Sons LLC has applied to the zoning board appeals to convert an existing second-floor space to a second residential unit. There are currently two commercial uses on the first floor and one residential unit on the second floor. The property is located in the regional retail zoning district. It requires a special permit under section twelve point one point eight to have two residential units above a legal, non-residential ground floor use and any other relief on the laws or orders. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you? My name is Ian Ainsley. I am an engineer from Isabram Corporation. I am here tonight with Noctrum Nguyen, the owner and applicant. This is an existing, pre-existing mixed-use building, two commercial uses on the first floor, used car sales and a hair salon. And there is a residential unit on the second and third floors. So just a point of clarification, the documentation and the application says that the proposed unit that we're trying to add would also be on the second floor. But I just want to clarify that we are going to have one unit on the second floor and one unit on the third floor. So it's not going to be two units on the second floor. It's going to be one unit on the second floor and one unit on the third floor. Same total number. I just wanted to point out that the application and.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Segliano, would note that on, like, the actual application, is that, was that correct or this is what they submitted? Is that just a clerical, like, kind of update? You know what I mean?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure. So what we're, let me just explain what we're applying for. So we're applying to essentially expand the use. Like I said, it's an existing mixed-use building, two commercial uses on the first floor, one residential unit on the second and third floor currently. We want to expand that and add a second residential unit. The language in the documentation says that the second unit would be added on the second floor so that there would be two units on the second floor. But what we're actually doing is adding one unit on the third floor. So same, same end goal, two units on floors above the ground floor. They're just on two separate floors.
That's not a major issue because you're just adding two units.
Okay.
So we will note that.
Okay. Yep.
I just wanted to get that clarified early.
Thank you, sir, for the clerical, yep.
But anyway, this is, like I said, an existing developed lot. Because it is a used car sales use on the first floor, there is a lot of parking on the lot. I believe I calculated forty-five spaces. The total number that would be required with this to be approved is forty. So we have more than enough parking for the commercial and residential uses should this be approved. The ground floor commercial use with the residential use above is allowed by special permit in this zone, the regional retail zone. So we're here really for an expansion of use of something that's already there, to go from one residential unit to two residential units. We are not proposing to do any construction work on the exterior of the property. We're not adding pavement. We won't be digging up the utilities or anything like that. This is actually all interior work in the building. And essentially, what they're proposing to do is to add a kitchen on the second floor so that that second floor can be used as one self-contained unit with the self-contained unit on the third floor that has a kitchen up there already. So that, that is the gist, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank, thank you, sir. If you have no further comments on your project, we'll move it, move the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? An opposition? An opposition? Seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. We're going to open up questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan, the vice chair, Mr. Vice Chair, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm sorry, I'm just very, very confused on what we're dealing with, and I think it's mostly on what's been submitted. I understand what's, what's being attempted, but we've got floor plans that are drawn out like this and has no dimensions. I'm not sure what's first floor, what's second floor, what's proposed second floor?
I can try to help clarify.
What's proposed third floor? All it is is drawings. I'm just, like, very confused.
Sure. So... So this is the building as it is now. Here, you have steps coming up the front to a front entrance here. These areas back here, you can kind of see in the topography, are a story lower than the entrance up here. So the entrance at the front is a story higher.
Okay.
Than the commercial down here. The two floor plans that you have, this is the middle of the second floor, so that's that front door coming in with those steps came up. That's the front door in the very front of the building.
Okay.
This is all, this would all be one unit on the second floor.
That's, that's what's existing or that's what's being proposed?
So, other than the kitchen that would be added to make that a second unit existing. So the kitchen is the only thing that is being proposed, and that's to turn it into its own self-contained unit. So when you come in through the front door, you have steps right here. Those steps would go up to the top floor, which is shown on the second page. And this is existing, kitchen on the third floor already.
Okay.
So you have commercial, first, ground floor.
Yep.
Resident, one unit of residents on the second floor, one unit of residents on the third floor. We're not adding in addition to the building, it's not expanding. So it's essentially just a conversion of one room in the building into a kitchen.
Okay. Maybe I must be losing something in translation here. There's already a residential unit in the building, right? It's on the second floor?
So it's, the second and third floor is one unit right now.
It's, okay. One existing unit.
They would be splitting it into two, essentially.
Okay. All right. That's, I think that's where the confusion lies. Because I thought it was one unit already there, now you want to add two. One in the second, another one on the second floor and the third floor. So you have three total. So you basically want to keep the second unit, add a kitchen, make that one, turn the second one on top as the second unit. There'll be two units?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have essentially one big unit right now.
Got it.
It spans two floors, and we're going to split that into two.
Okay.
Total of two units.
My, my apologies, I was just, just kind of, and I just was trying to figure it out from what was submitted and what was written. I wasn't, because I wasn't sure what was existing there previously, forgetting and understanding, I guess that's where I was lying, but.
Understood.
So for the first floor unit, we're looking at, it's a three-bedroom?
Yes.
It says, because it just says room.
Yeah, it's a three-bedroom.
So you see the kitchen. I'm going to guess below the kitchen is what's being proposed for a living room? That's the third floor, right?
Yes, so that would be the living room down the front, yeah.
Okay. You walk in the front door, front door to the apartment is right on the left, right-hand side, right into the living room, then you got your kitchen.
Yeah.
Your bathroom.
Bathroom.
And then hallway, then you got three rooms back there, are those for, those are bedrooms, bedrooms, I'm guessing?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the stairway to the second, third floor unit.
Would be right.
Would be right there.
Yeah.
You walk up, then you have an entry into what's labeled room.
And that's, yeah, case you see here.
Yep. Okay. Okay, so you have two entry, so you have two entryways there?
Well, this is the third floor. So there is a, there is an exit in the back.
Yep.
Stairs, you can go down the exterior. So you do have two entrances, yeah. You come in interior, or you can exit through the back, through the exterior.
Okay. So downstairs below, when you come up the stairs for the third floor unit, is there a door there? That's where, that's where the main entrance way is going to be for that particular unit, right? Okay.
Yeah, so they're both going to come in the same, one's going to go to the right for their unit, one's going to go upstairs.
Okay. And you only have one bathroom up in that unit, as far as I can see, right?
Yeah, I believe there's one bathroom in each.
Okay. Okay. All right, I think I get an idea of the layout here, so let's listen to my other fellow board members at this point, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Know the area, I know the building pretty well, and I don't think splitting one bedroom into, I mean, one apartment into two is going to make much of a difference traffic-wise, parking-wise, so I have no problems with this.
It's a pretty heavily developed area. There's commercial all around it. There is a little bit of residential, maybe 300 feet or so down the road. So there is kind of a mix in that area, but mostly commercial.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, well, thank you for your explanation, because I think it makes a lot of sense now, subdividing one unit into two, basically.
Yeah. And it's because it requires a special permit that we're here before you.
Understood, understood. Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't have any opposition to this. I think it, it makes sense, but, yeah, yeah, I, I don't have any, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you familiar with the memorandum from DPD?
Yes.
Specifically, the comments from Building Commissioner Fuller?
Yes.
Speaking about a sprinkler system.
Well, my question would be, what is the threshold that would require that? I'm not sure what it is.
Francesca?
If I may, the building inspector that will be reviewing the building application eventually, should the board choose to approve the application, will make sure that it meets the building code and the fire code, so I wouldn't worry about that too much. It's just an FYI to the applicant early on about what may be required. But I don't know what, I don't know what triggers a sprinkler system requirement, but that will be evaluated by the building inspector. So it's just an FYI to that.
Well, my question was just to ensure that you were aware of that.
Yes, yes, and we are.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Speaker, and thank you, Director Segliano, for that information. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this makes a lot of sense. It seems like an incredibly large structure as it is, and making it more reasonable with subdividing the unit makes a lot of sense. So, and you have plenty of parking, and it doesn't affect the neighbors, it's a great use. You could even subdivide it more, I think, I don't know. I don't know, you're showing some restraint.
You know, actually, I think the use table would actually specifically says one or two units above.
Oh, got it, okay. All right. It's just such a big building.
Yeah.
Very big building, in any event. Well, thank you, I can support this.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. You know, I actually think this is, just request the conversion of the second, third floor into residential unit makes sense. You know, you're above a very large commercial kind of lot there. The Nguyen's have been very good people to the community. They, they help out with a lot of different causes and they're very philanthropic, so thank you for that, you know. And, you know, you know, I guess the commercial use doesn't make sense, so residential totally makes sense. The city is always in need of housing, and again, no one's here in opposition, so it's always, that's always a good thing. So I have no concerns. If there's no further comments from my colleagues, we'll move to a motion.
Just one, one more thing.
Yeah, Ms. Callahan.
Chairman, I'm sorry, maybe, I'm just kind of curious. Is it dedicated parking for the commercial unit, the current commercial unit that's there as far as on, in the, on the lot? I mean, just seems like something you want to possibly have for, if you're going to have a couple of residential units there.
What's your question?
Is it dedicated parking spaces for the, for the residential units presently, or the, the one residential unit presently, or?
Yeah, so there are ones that are designated for the.
Okay. So I presume if there's, if the board approves it, and you're going to have two, two separate units, you're going to have additional, additional dedicated parking just for the residents? Okay. Now, I just want to make sure, I didn't know if it was a free-for-all between the residents and the commercial, because again, that'll be an issue, this, this, yeah, we'll be getting angry calls from our tenants. So, but, and how do they access the property there? I'm just, because it's on that incline, I'm just really.
Sure, yeah.
And there's that gate, there's that gate that's there.
You know the property, so this is Pawtucket, and this kind of goes up.
Yeah, and when it merges at Middlesex, yeah.
There's lights right here.
Yeah.
Middlesex is here. There's pave right here.
Yeah.
Apron, there's a gate, it's a chain link.
Yeah.
So when that's open, you can get right in there. You can drive.
Okay. No, that's what I was curious, because it seems that that gate's always closed.
This is all on solid green right here, so you can see in there, it's screened pretty well.
No, no, again, I was just kind of curious, because it seemed that gates always closed and didn't know how people got in and out. I mean, sure they have, well, there's a will, there's a way, so, but.
You know, open the gate.
Yep. I guess would be amenable, just to make sure we're on the same page, we can condition that there are dedicated parking spots for the residential units on the, okay, just to make sure. Again, don't want, don't want to have angry phone calls from our tenants. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if we can just condition that.
Yes. You have amenable to that condition, Mr. Ainsley, the dedicated parking spot on the lot. And, and, Mr. Vice Chairman, I do want to say, I've, I've been there, I've, I've seen the back, I've, I've seen the front. I'm very familiar with the Nguyen's, it's a large lot, it has plenty of parking, so, but yeah, we can, if you're amenable to that, we'll dedicate the, a spot to that, to the residential units. If there's no further comments from my colleagues, we'll move through with a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-60 for a special permit at 915 Pawtucket Street to provide two residential units above a commercial with the condition that the applicant will provide dedicated residential parking on site.
Second?
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve the conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approved.
All right, sir, you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Going on into other business, we have minutes for approval for November 14, 2022, the meeting minutes. Is there any comments, edits, revisions, updates? Seeing none, can we motion for the minutes, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 14th. Is that right now? November 14th, 2022.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second, Mr. Proko. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approve minute, meeting minutes for November 14th, 2022.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes for November 14th, 2022.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve meeting minutes, November 14th, 2022.
Member Hovey.
Approved.
All right, the minutes have been approved. If there's no further comments, questions? Oh, Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
I, I just wanted to update the board. A month and a half ago, two months ago, we had a discussion about the administrative reviews, and Francesca did forward about 70 meeting minutes that I went through and noticed that we have 10 administrative reviews listed on different applications in different stages. Some go back almost four years and some are pretty current, so I'll be forwarding that information to Francesca, and hopefully we'll be able to track that in the meeting minutes going forward, because there's a lot of them that I don't know if we're getting to, but we have listed administrative reviews as a condition. And then the second one is about two years ago now, November 23rd, 2020, I brought up the 150 Wood Street, the Bowers' house, the oldest house in the city, that way back when, when we approved that, we had stipulated that the property would be maintained by the owners, the Kazangian Enterprises. But that, we were told in November that it wasn't enforceable as a condition. And so I, I went by the property, there's broken windows on all four sides, and the back of it has missing clawboards and never been painted in who knows how long. It's, it's not in great shape. It's the oldest house in the city built in 1671, and I don't know if I would have approved the application if I didn't think that we were going to get the applicant to maintain it. So I'm suggesting that maybe we look into what we can do to revisit the approval and see if we can come up with a way that assures us that the applicant does maintain the oldest house in the city that was part of the condition originally when we approved it.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Director Segliano, I don't know if you want to comment on some of these questions. You know, we've been talking about just maybe, we know DPD and your department's very overbooked and a lot of pending projects and everything. We just wanted to be up to, up to par and do our due diligence, and some of these conditions have pretty much not followed through, and if there's any recourse that, that we can do as a board, would that mean that the actual special permit variance would be in jeopardy? If that makes sense, Director?
Yes. So regarding the first item, the outstanding administrative reviews, we can absolutely schedule them, we just haven't had time to wrap our head around the task of going through. So thank you to Member McCarthy for looking at those minutes, very helpful. My suggestion would be, with respect to that, maybe not necessarily adding it to the agenda, we could add it to the agenda, and whoever's staffing the meeting could speak to that.
Whatever works, I mean, whatever makes sense.
Do that, or we could also just, as soon as we've completed the administrative review, we would add it to the agenda, and, and it would be an under other business discussion point. But like I said, once we get that list of 10 locations, we will get them in the books for site visits and do our due diligence to ensure that the conditions of approval were met and that there's, we'll communicate with relevant departments. So for example, the, the traffic or the transportation engineer may, may have to get looped in for parking-related stuff to check to see whether there have been any complaints related to parking or transportation. We will do all of that. Again, it was just kind of a matter of like wrapping our head around it, so we will, once we get the list, definitely schedule those and update you on the status of each application. And then with respect to the Bowers' house, we, I, I do think potentially a formal law opinion investigating, because we can, staff can look into Chapter 40A, but we are not as equipped to look into case law, and the law department can. I will note that the law department is also spread very thin, probably even more thin than DPD, so the turnaround time for that might be pretty extended. But they would be able to tell us what options we have with respect to potentially... respect to potentially bringing an applicant back before the board because of the board not being happy with how the project has turned out. I have never seen that or experienced that personally, so I don't know what the recourse is for the board, but I think that the law department would be able to dig into that more deeply and let us know.
Well, Fran, we have a board enforcement officer for DPD, right?
Yes.
And go in and check, just maybe investigate as far as whether conditions are being satisfactorily met, or what needs to be done, or something of that effect that we can have a look into and report back?
So I think, I think it's clear that the condition isn't being met, and we know that, and so it isn't a matter of confirming whether or not the condition is being met, it's, okay, the condition is not being, is not, is not being met, and we are, we were told, at least by the previous Director of Development Services, that it's not enforceable. I think it's in conflict with the minimum maintenance, general city ordinance, that this, that supersedes this condition of approval, I, that's my recollection, unless Member McCarthy had a different recollection.
I think the approach that you outlined with the legal department looking into it and understanding how best we could approach it, because I think it is a legal aspect here at this point, where we as a board put a condition on, and then based on that condition, approved the project, knowing that we had that condition to kind of safeguard us with that property being maintained, learning that that's not maintainable, I think we need a legal opinion as to how we can proceed. I will say that it doesn't meet the minimum standards for the sanitary code, I think, where there's broken windows, and we have snow coming, and the back isn't sited and it hasn't been painted, and those are requirements to meet that code, and that's not being enforced for whatever reason, but...
So I don't know if you recall, with Eric saying not enforceable, my recollection is that it's a minimum maintenance violation under the general city ordinance, and that the health inspectors could potentially follow up on minimum property maintenance generally not being met, and that you as a resident could report that. That's what I recall, so we could, you could revisit that also.
Okay. I just, it's just, I just cry every time I go by that property.
Yeah, I understand. So it's up to the board, the board can vote to request a law opinion, we could go a different route and pursue enforcement, not through our board enforcement agent, but through the health inspectors for minimum maintenance violation. It's up to you as the board.
I don't know who else was on the board, but I know that if I was unable to secure that condition, I would not have voted for this to go forward.
I can't remember even how long ago it was.
I think it was 17, 15 or 17, I think it was 2000, I think it was Christine McCall that was sitting in your seat at the time, yeah.
I'd actually like to go back and look at the project again myself, and see what conditions we put on it, and I guess, I don't know, maybe table it till the beginning of the year or something. I know Dennis won't, you won't be here next meeting, correct?
I won't be here next meeting, I didn't mean to say that.
It's your thing, I don't want us to do any...
I'm away, right.
So, I mean, I don't know if I want to take a vote on anything right now, I mean, I'd probably like to research myself as far as what the condition was, maybe, bounce it around my legal circles and see if there's something I can understand, if there's anything, but, again, with the understanding that chances are, if we have to go to the law department, we'll definitely go there first, but, I mean, I certainly would, I don't think I'd want to take any vote right now, maybe, again, consider it maybe beginning of the year, I presume, since we only have one meeting yet, left this year, and the next meeting after that will be January, and Dennis won't be here in the next meeting, so, sorry, I didn't mean to announce that right off the bat, Dennis.
Yeah, we can table that, Mr. McCarthy, if that's, if that's okay with you, and thank you, Director Sigliano, for all the information, we're, you know, we're looking to the matter as well, beginning of the new year, just, any general information would be helpful, I think, so thank you for that.
And I guess in the meantime, if the board enforcement officer wants to just at least go over and maybe do a little snooping of her own, and report back to the board as to what the conditions are, I mean, I don't know if that's something she, in her purview, but...
Yeah, I think that's, that is the question, is, is this, is maintenance in the zoning board's purview, and I think that's why Eric thought that it was not enforceable, and why he wanted this to go through our health inspectors that do, that enforce minimum maintenance standards that are in our general ordinance, that's what, that's why I think Eric said it wasn't enforceable.
If I recall, it was Steve Stoll involved as well, and I think we had, in the language, it was something about the, Steve Stoll to be involved with assisting in it, and then Steve said it's not in the historic district, so he's not involved, so the...
Yes.
The language in the condition was not enforceable partly because of the language itself.
Okay.
I think.
Because it's not in a historic district.
Right, and Steve can't have anything to do with it.
So then it would be the health inspectors who would do it. So it's not in our board enforcement agent's purview.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why she hasn't gone in.
Want to just pass it on to the board, or just suggest to the board of health, hey, zoning board was talking about this?
Yeah.
You guys, if you guys want to maybe take a look, they can say no, or they can just...
Because, I mean, the health inspectors can aggressively fine properties up to $300 a day, up to, they don't typically do that, but, I mean, they, well, May is also authorized to do that, but, but that doesn't answer your question of what happens when the board realizes that a condition of approval that they voted on to feel comfortable with a project isn't enforceable, like, what do they have as recourse? It doesn't answer that question, so I think that's a, maybe Sean can look into that, and then at the next meeting, or the next meeting that the full board is here, we can revisit that.
I guess put it on for open discussion or something, it's just between us, it's not anything.
Yeah, that works.
Not public, it's not public notice or anything, it's not a public hearing, it's just an open discussion amongst...
Correct.
Amongst the board.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, thank you, Director Sigliano, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. If there's no further comments from my colleagues, we'll move to a motion to adjourn.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn of Mr. McCarthy, second of Mr. Brier, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any nays, ayes, ayes, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
I'd just like to wish everybody happy holidays, now that you all know that I won't be here at the next meeting.